Good evening, everybody. I would like to call to order the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners' regular meeting for December the 16th, 2013. Welcome to everybody in the audience tonight. I would like to request that if you have a mobile device, please put it on silent or vibrate so that it doesn't go off during the meeting. This is a live meeting that is televised on Time Warner Cable. Also as a reminder, this will show on Sunday and Saturdays at 1:00 p.m., Sunday and Tuesday at 6:30 p.m., and Thursday and Friday at 6:30 p.m. So at this time, we would like to have our presentation of colors, and we're happy to welcome Girl Scout Troop 403 from Kimball Lutheran Church in Kannapolis. Please rise.
Prepare to post the colors. Post the colors. Please join us in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Color guard returned to post.
For invocation tonight, we're happy to welcome Father James Geiger from St. James the Greater Catholic Church in Concord. Father Geiger, thank you. Welcome.
You're welcome.
You use this microphone right here.
This is a reading from the Book of Wisdom, which is called Solomon's Prayer. Send wisdom forth from your holy heavens and from your glorious throne, dispatch her, that she may be with us and work with us, that we may know what is your pleasure, for she knows and understands all things, and will guide us discreetly in our affairs, and safeguard us by her glory. Thus our deeds will be acceptable. Lord, we ask that this prayer of Solomon may become for our commissioners their own prayer. Guide them by your wisdom, support them by your power. Grant that they be dedicated leaders, sincere in dialogue, and deliberate judicially for the sake of all county citizens. We thank you, Lord, for their generous gifts of time and talent, and for their enthusiasm in all things civic. May you bless them, Lord, bless their deliberations, and graciously bless the people of this county. Amen.
Thank you. I'd also ask that you join me, please, in a moment of silence. Cabarrus County lost a longtime servant of the citizens of Concord and Cabarrus County, Dr. Hector Henry, this past week. Please join me in a moment as we remember Dr. Henry and all of his service to the community, and his family, and the loss that they're feeling at this time. Thank you all very much. Okay. Commissioners, the first item that we have is approval or correction of the minutes. At this time, I accept a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Slow move.
Have a motion, there a second?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and I forgot the Girl Scouts. Okay, I'm sorry. Apologize, I jumped real quick. We need to have the Girl Scouts come back up. My apologies, ladies. You're right. You were right. You were right, as always. I apologize. If y'all will come on up to the microphone. I got ahead of myself again. Come on, you were good up there earlier. Can you tell us your name and what school you go to, and tell us why you like Girl Scouts?
My name's Brianna. I go to Kannapolis Middle School, and the reason I like Girl Scouts is because we do all fun stuff.
Thank you very much. Commissioner Burridge has a pen for you. Hey.
My name is Magic Tompkins.
You can pull that microphone down just a little bit so you make sure we get... There we go.
My name is Magic Tompkins. I go to Kannapolis. I like to play.
Why do you like Girl Scouts?
Because I am Brownie.
Because you're a Brownie?
Yeah.
Very good. Thank you very much.
Got it?
There you go.
My name is Cheyenne Rutter, and I'm homeschooled.
Why do you like Girl Scouts?
Because I like to do a lot of the hands-on stuff.
Very good. Thank you.
Your name?
My name is Nazalia.
And what school do you go to?
I go to Shady Brook.
And why do you like Girl Scouts?
Because we do lots of fun activities.
Thank you very much. Let's give an applause for the Girl Scouts. Thank you. At this time, I would turn the meeting over to the county manager.
I nominate Chris Meesmer for chairman.
I would like to nominate Liz Poole as chairman.
Okay. Are there any other nominations? Have a motion to close nominations?
Same move, second.
All those in favor of closing nominations? Nominations are now closed. We will vote on the two individually. So, as in with the first nomination, so we will vote on Mr. Chris Meesmer. All those in favor, say aye, or raise your hand, please, so I can... Yeah, you can.
Chairman Poole, I think you do a tremendous job running this, running the meeting from a procedural perspective. I think it's excellent. I would just say that I think that we have some very tough negotiations coming with our school board. I think that I've put forward a proposal by which we would not borrow more funds. To date, you have not said whether you would support that or not, and your history has been not necessarily to support things like that, and so I think it's important that we have somebody that would stand strong for the taxpayers, for our chairman, in terms of those negotiations.
Any other discussion? Okay. Discussion is closed. We will vote for, first, for Chris Meesmer. All those in favor for Chris Meesmer, please raise your hand. Two. Okay. Now we will vote for Ms. Poole. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Three. So, based on the votes, Rich, you okay with that? Everything's good? Based on the votes, Ms. Ms. Poole will serve as chairman of the board. And I will pass it back to Ms. Poole so that she can hold the elections for the vice chair.
Thank you. At this time, we open the floor for nominations for vice chair.
I'll nominate Chris Meesmer for vice chair as well.
Second.
Okay. There's a motion and a second. Are there any other nominations? I'll nominate Commissioner Burridge for vice chair.
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. Any other nominations? Okay, at this time, may I have a motion to close the nominations for vice chair? Excuse me, I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, and we'll do same way. All those in favor of Commissioner Meesmer for vice chair, please raise your hand. There's two. All those in favor of Larry Burridge, please raise your hand. Three. Rich, are you satisfied again with that? Okay. And Commissioner Burridge has been elected vice chair. Do you want to make any comments? Okay. Next item that we have is approval of the agenda. There are some changes to the agenda. At this time, I accept a motion to approve the agenda, including the changes. I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have recognitions and presentations. Let me get to the right page. Okay, we have a proclamation for Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day. Whereas Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. was born on January 15th, 1929, in Atlanta, Georgia, and devoted his life to fighting poverty, injustice, and racism in America; and whereas Dr. King, through his practice of nonviolent protest, promoted the importance of love, peace, and freedom for humankind, and challenged America to honor its promise of liberty and justice for all citizens; and whereas during his lifetime, Dr. King sought to forge the common ground on which individuals of all ages, races, and backgrounds could join together to address important community issues and provide service to their community; and whereas the third Monday in January has been established as a national holiday to observe the anniversary of Dr. King's birth, now therefore, the Cabarrus County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims Monday, January 20th, 2014, as Dr. Martin Luther King Jr. Day in Cabarrus County, and encourages all citizens to join in the special programs and ceremonies to be held on January 18 through 20, honoring the life and work of Dr. King and his legacy of peace and equality for all citizens. Do I have a motion to approve the proclamation? Do I have a motion and a second? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Next, we have Active Living in Parks, and I'd like to recognize Londa Strong and Lenora Barron. If you'll come up, please.
Good evening. The North Carolina Recreation and Park Association recognizes individuals who have made significant contributions in enhancing the quality of life. These awards are presented annually at the state conference. This year, the Active Living in Parks Department staff submitted an application nominating Lenora Barron for the Special Citation Award for her contributions in the development of a school park at Weddington Hills Elementary. More specifically, the paved walking trail, the development of a paved nature trail that boasts a butterfly garden, wetlands, bird feeding area, camera for bird and deer watching, nature education sign, the installation of shelter, composting area, gardening, plant identification, reintroduction of native plants. I think you get the idea there, just the list goes on and on with what she's done, and I don't even know all the stuff that she has done. Through the Active Living in Parks Department Matching Incentive Grant Program, $90,550 has been awarded to Weddington Hills through Ms. Barron's efforts. I know she's received additional grants from state, local, and national organizations as well, so there's a lot more money than just that $90,000. The Special Citation Award is presented annually to someone who has demonstrated an outstanding interest in the field of recreation and parks, or has made a contribution to the advancement of the recreation and parks profession. Evidenced by the project itself, the fact that students work on the nature trail is award, as a reward, and the students come back to visit, excuse me, and check on the project, as well as the letters of support nominating Ms. Barron, she is very deserving of this award. I don't know the total number of nominations submitted for this award this year, but normally it ranges between 50 to 75 to 100 in that neighborhood, so we were very pleased when we found out that Mrs. Barron had won this award. There were letters submitted along with the nominations from the superintendent, the Board of Commission Chair, Mrs. Janet Smith, her principal, and several parents. The theme through all these letters was the same, a great role model, great mentor, dedicated, and most importantly, a comment we've heard about Mrs. Barron say, "It's all about the kids." So, with that said, on behalf of the National, of the North Carolina Recreation and Park Association, I'd like to present the 2013 Award, Special Citation Award to Lenora Barron.
Thank you very much. I'm just so pleased because this is just a great partnership that we've had with the Parks and Recreation Department, and I couldn't do it, of course, without leadership from our staff here, that our principal and assistant principal. We just have a great, a great opportunity there to get kids outside, and they love it. They really love it. We've had a garden the last couple of years, and we're even able to share a green pepper with Commissioner this summer, so we're very pleased, and I really do appreciate it. Thank you.
And if you're principal, assistant principal, you'll stand up, please, because I know that you, Weddington Hills has been, you've been working on this for a long time.
Yep.
Thirteen, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen years, something like that. And you know she'll never let you retire, and if you do, it won't matter, you'll still have to be out there keeping it fixed up. So, thank you for, for everything you've done out there. You sure have taken that school to heart.
Thank you. I appreciate it. We have a great partnership, and that's what it's all about. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Jonathan Marshall, and I'd also ask David Baxter to come up, please. Judge Horton, is he coming up too?
Yes, Judge Horton is coming up too. Maybe reluctantly, but he's going to join him.
We're gonna, I think we've got enough people to make sure you come down, down front, Judge.
Obviously, I'm pinch hitting for our other deputy county manager, Pam Dubois, in helping present these awards. But our communications and outreach department, I know you're all aware of the effect they have in the community, and you, particularly through the television programming, you hear from the citizens, and we hear from the citizens all the time, how much they learn through that programming. I personally love watching the historic moments. In fact, I told Judge Horton before this meeting that I watched the Pfeiffer family went over again, and just to get ready for this, and it was an excuse to watch it again. But in addition to David Baxter, we have other staff, and particularly with these two awards, Amy Hawkins and Christopher Bullard, who are former staff members, were among those who worked on these and are being recognized with these awards. But we also have, of course, Kasha Thompson on that staff, as well as two new staff members, Jared Glass and Emily Shepherd, from that department, who all worked together on these. So the first place Savvy Award, and David will give you more details on these, was for the historic moments on the Pfeiffer family. The judges described that in their, in their comments as the script and storytelling were superb. And then the third place Award of Excellence was for Cabarrus this week in the hot air balloon ride. And if you've watched that one, I made note to David, who has a much deeper voice than me. The higher that balloon got, or at least the longer it went up, the higher his voice got. I thought that was interesting.
It was exciting.
But they noted that that one was an impressive energetic talent. That's, your voice getting higher. And very professional editing. And these are national awards, but our communications and outreach department have won 16 national and state awards in the last five years alone, and those are displayed in the cabinet downstairs. And I'd like to get David maybe a comment on some of that.
Oh, okay. Well, it's Jonathan, thanks. I mean, when I came on board 10 years ago, when Amy Hawkins and I were hired, one of the first relationships we forged is with historic Cabarrus and Clarence, and that has been a 22-segment fruitful relationship. And it's, you know, working with Clarence is a joy. And obviously, it's really nice to be recognized with your peers across the country, and we were the only station in the country to actually win two awards in the same category. And we're really pleased with, about that. But besides that, the real thing that is joyful, working in the communications department, and we have such a great team now, it's like, we get people coming up to us all the time and tell us that, how it affected their life, the stuff that they hear on the channel, they see on the website, Facebook, all those, the social media aspect, that it, in some cases, it literally changed people's lives. There was one case in particular where there was a woman who came up and said that her parents had worked in the Cannon Mills for all their life, and when Cannon Mills closed down, they really were struggling, and they were just barely existing. And they heard about a program we talked about on the show, and they found out about it, they qualified for it, and they went from existing to living. And she just wanted to thank us for that. And that is the type of thing, because, you know, and in other cases, it's the quality of life. So there's so much that the county does for all the citizens and the residents of Cabarrus County, you know, I'm just so happy that our team can do one little thing to get that information out there and help folks. So, anyway, that's mine. Clarence, would you like to say something?
Very briefly. This gives me an opportunity to thank this board for having the vision to have this program continue over the years. We never intended it to go, didn't think it would go this long, so we thank you for for that. And also it gives me the chance to thank you for, this is the 40th year of the preservation of the historic courthouse, and that's turned into our, of course, our most recognizable beautiful building. That would not have been possible without the support of the Board of Commissioners. So on behalf of all the, all the citizens and all those who work in this area, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations. Okay, and next, we want to recognize Ben Rose, and ask Ben to come up, and Terry Montgomery, please to come up and join him.
Good evening. This is with mixed emotion tonight, that we recognize and honor Terry and her retirement. I'll give you a little information on Terry. She joined the agency in 2004, April 2004, after 33 years with Pilotex, after their closing. She came to us as an accounting clerk, and she has been responsible, as this agency has grown, on helping us get our bills paid on time. As you can imagine, in an agency our size, we have quite a few bills. But another important aspect that she's really helped us on lately is the implementation of the NC Trax billing system. This is the system that we get reimbursement for, for our Community Alternatives Program. And anything with NC in front of it lately has not worked well for us, and NC Trax is one of those, one of those included, and Terry's just done a tremendous job in helping us work through these bugs in these systems to get our reimbursements on track as well. And then with consolidation of aging in transportation, she's taken on additional roles there as well, and it's just always, just been a joy and a pleasure to work with. And we'll give you a couple of personal facts about her. She enjoys going to the beach with her husband, Tony, who is here tonight, and we're glad he's joined us. I understand they enjoy riding motorcycles, and they enjoy their pets, a dog, a little dog. But the most fun thing about Terry that I like is that she is a huge fan of wrestling. And we've had many discussions about Ric Flair, Dusty Rhodes, Wahoo McDaniel, the old, the old guys, the old school wrestlers, but she is a current fan today, and she just gets so excited about it, and it's such a joy to talk with her about wrestling. We're going to really miss Terry. She's been a wonderful asset to our department. We're excited for her and glad that she's moving on to another phase of retirement, but you will be sorely missed, and we want to thank you for all that you've done for the county and for the citizens, and on behalf of the county, I'd like to present you with this.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations, Terry, on your retirement.
I appreciate it. Thank you.
Would you like to say a word?
As Ben said, I was truly devastated when I lost my job from Pilotex, Phil Chris Cannon, after 33 years. And I worked there until October, the mill, most of the people left in July, but I worked until October of 2003. And then my husband kept encouraging me to apply with the county, so I did. And I kept applying and applying. He said, "If you don't get this job, apply for the next one." So I did. And I'm so glad that I did, because God blessed me with this job, and I'm truly blessed with it, and I have had a wonderful work experience, great people to work with, and it's been my honor and privilege to work for Cabarrus County.
Thank you very much. We appreciate your husband being persistent enough to keep telling you to apply. Thank you. Next, we have informal public comments. First, I'd like to call on Bishop Roland Jordan. Welcome, Bishop.
Good evening. Thank you, Ms. Chairman, and board members, attorney and religious secretary, can't do without a good secretary, because when I start preaching, I say, "Lord, just give me a secretary." I ain't no that good a reader, but I know the secretary can, and I commend it. First, I want to thank you for the proclamation of Dr. Martin Luther King, and I hope when I'm going to meet God in glory, that it continue to be the proclamation in Cabarrus County, because it's very important to keep nonviolent peace and equality to all mankind and child. And I want to again thank you, the support for the county commission, as well as your board, as you met with me, with some situation I had to go through. It was a hardship being a man, but Jesus said we must endure hardship, praise God. But I thank God that, the battle's not over, but we still looking for justice to be done. And I ask you for your continuation to help Bible's Coach, if you can. We need your support. I'm a man of education, it's a terrible thing to waste. So let's keep that hope, and whatever we can do, support the school. God bless. Have a happy new year and a merry Christmas.
Thank you. Next, Jean Griswold.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioners and staff, and Merry Christmas. My name is Jean Griswold. I live out in the county, south of Mount Pleasant. I currently sit as an at-large member of the Cabarrus County Republican Executive Committee, and as such, my thanks go to those of you who were able to join us last night to hear David Barton speak. What an incredible presentation. Today, however, I speak to you as an individual citizen of Cabarrus, with three folk I, small business, our veterans, and the elderly. My husband and I own four small businesses based in Cabarrus. They include electronics firm, a real estate brokerage, and a property management company that focuses on providing services to deployed military personnel. We are a military family. My father was Navy career. My mother is a 95-year-old World War II veteran who lives with us. My son, Jack, lives in Harrisburg. He is a West Point grad and an Army veteran. My husband and both of my brothers are veterans. So you can see, everything that happens in Cabarrus County that affects small business, the elderly, or our veterans, is very dear to our hearts. At the work session earlier this month, Commissioner Osterich made a presentation beginning at hour 1:18:25. For those citizens watching today who have not seen or heard that presentation, I would encourage you to go back and hear the full remarks, either on the county website, Channel 22, YouTube, or via the commissioner's website, jasonosterich.com. The results of this research were impactful, powerful, and compelling. Every citizen of Cabarrus County needs to understand the impact of his findings on their own small businesses, our veterans, and the elderly. Today, I encourage each of you, as board members, tasked with the fiscal caretaking and decision-making responsibility for this county, to take Commissioner Osterich's recommendations under close review, and then to vote affirmatively to make each and every one of them a part of the budget process for the fiscal year 2015 and ongoing years. My family and I are in full support of what Commissioner Osterich has brought before and recommended to the board and the county. Thank you so much. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Next, Marvin Bost.
Good evening, Commissioners.
Good evening, Commissioners, Chairman, and Board. I come tonight, um, came last month and had some concerns. Came back, uh, this time after doing a little, uh, research and everything. A couple things. Uh, the number one thing is, I want the people of Cabarrus County to understand that, if one thing that I do not understand, and maybe you can bring some light to it. The Cabarrus Arena was built in about 2000, 2001, and I'm just not quite understanding why our county is still sending a $600 and something thousand dollar check a year to this facility. I was under the understanding, when it was to begin, that it was gonna be a profitable thing for it to stand on its own feet. And to this day, if you're still sending this check, what you sent in the last five or six years could have put some of these roofs on these, on these schools that you're looking for. It's, uh, I, I've, you know, went through to the state fair and some of the other facilities that have like this, and there's no outfit or any money, state monies or anything goes into these. They are working on their own. And I think that it's time for you, the Commissioners, to review and look at this and let arenas stand on its own and use that other, that money for something else besides upfitting it, or whatever it is. The other is, uh, there's some, you know, questions about, uh, some trips that's been taken here lately, uh, several times in a row by a county employee, uh, that's, uh, I know that the cost of things of traveling and everything is, but, uh, I think that that's another thing that needs to be taken in consideration also and looked at. I just, you know, we're, we're for a better Cabarrus County, and I think that, uh, the fair also needs to be looked at with a good, heavy eye and see if we can't make it for a better. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Okay, next Carolyn Carpenter.
I'm Carolyn Carpenter, and I'm the chairman of the Cabarrus County Fair Board. First of all, I would like to, uh, wish all of you, uh, from the executive board, a very Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. And I'm here, uh, this evening, basically, to, to let you know that, uh, the fair is doing very well. We have got two very good, the fair manager, uh, has done a very good job, and also, uh, the, uh, Matt, uh, Matt Behringer, uh, that runs the, uh, ag part, has done a very good job. This past, uh, fair went very, very well. We had record attendance. Uh, we also, we brought home 22, uh, international awards and state awards. I, I think that is outstanding for our fair. Uh, as David mentioned earlier, their, uh, the communication outreach, they did 16 awards in five years. So I think for us to bring home 22 awards in one year is outstanding. And, uh, they are trying to take our fair, uh, another level. Uh, they've worked very hard, and I know this past, uh, fair, they were putting out surveys to ask the people that came, what can we do better? And they do this last year, they did it this year, and we worked very hard. I know on, uh, the sanitation part, we, we were very concerned, especially since the outbreak of E. coli. We worked very hard putting extra stations in place, and I think we had a very successful fair. And I think it's due to the management, and we worked very hard, and, uh, we're, we, we do a really good job. We have people coming from many, many states to come to our fair. And I think you can be very proud of the, the management staff that we have there, uh, in place. And I think that you should be very, very proud of them. I know that, uh, our executive board, we meet with, with them and work very closely with them, and we're very, very proud of it. And when we see a problem, we do try to correct it, uh, and if someone brings it to our attention, we do try to make sure that we're doing what we need to do. And the staff do take those things very, very seriously. But I think you can be very, very proud of the staff that you've got on hand. And again, we want to thank, uh, you for all you do, and if you do have questions, uh, we are, always have an open door policy, and we want to thank you for everything that you do do. Thank you, and y'all have a great New Years.
Thank you. Um, next we have James Lentz.
Of course, I am James Lentz, and I live at 4499 Highway 73 East, which is in Concord area. Uh, I have been involved with the fair for probably 50 years, ever since it began, uh, as, starting with as a young participant with cattle, and then later, uh, other things. Uh, the, uh, as a whole, I think the fair does a terrific job. We can't be blamed for any loss of the whole program out there. We only be out, we're only out there for a week, you know, and a week setting up and a week tearing down. Uh, I know we have received 16 awards within the last couple of weeks, or Kate has, and she's doing a remarkable job. I'm just thinking, my involvement, I was out for two years. I was drafted in the Army, so I was gone, and that's the two years that I was not out there. Uh, other than that, I was there. The fair grows on you. You meet a lot of great people out there. Oh, and one thing, I have never been salaried in any way. I've handled the money a lot of times, but, uh, there's a lot of eyes on me whenever I got, got the money. Uh, but other than that, uh, and I can't, you know, if I was trying to improve the fair, I would make suggestions, I would get some formal information and make suggestions and try to carry them out. That would be my way of doing it. And not to, not destruction, not by upsetting our staff. Our staff is really upset, and that's the biggest problem I have. And, uh, we're fortunate to have them. And thank you, and y'all have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Brittany Truesdale.
My name is Brittany Truesdale. I'm with the Animal House 4H and North Stanley FFA. I was named in the Tribune when I spoke here last month on the conditions of the Cabarrus County Fair. Would not bring this to you because we were mad, as Matt Behringer said, the reason we came to make you aware was what was going on and how unsafe it was for us and our sheep.
Thank you. Susan Farr.
Thank you, Commissioners, for having us today. Um, I spoke to y'all last month with Brittany on the conditions at the Cabarrus County Fair, and I was quoted in an article with, um, uh, I think her name was Karen Wilson. Um, she said that she had interviewed Matt Behringer, and she had interviewed Kate Sharp. And numerous times, uh, both of them said that we were just complaining because our sheep had to follow the cows, and that this was a state law, and that the law requires them to follow that. Um, after talking to Dr. Marshall, the state vet from NC State University, Kevin Hardison, the county fair coordinator, and Neil Bowman with the NCDA and CS, there is no such law. They can make recommendations sometime. I think there was a thing in Washington DC where, uh, some sheep had contracted something, and it went to the cows. And this is in Washington DC, and this is, you know, kind of an isolated incident. Um, we were not mad because the sheep had to follow the cows. We follow the cows at most of the fairs, and that doesn't affect us. I am kinda upset about the fact that the lady did not call me for an interview. She called them and talked to them, but she didn't call me back. I showed y'all the pictures of what happened, and I'm sure y'all read this article that was in the paper. And they said that they may have missed a pile or two along the way. There were three days, it was, I think the last cow showed on Thursday, and we were there on Saturday. There was plenty of time to clean this up, and instead they just kept piling on straw. And as a matter of fact, he says down here, when it was brought to their attention, they brought more straw out and piled it on top of it. This is an unsafe condition for kids, and there were people, the gates weren't being manned to go in between the restricted area where the, um, livestock was, not for petting. There were gates there, but they weren't manned, so everybody was coming through and going, you know, both ways. The reason I complain about stuff like this, number one, is my kids are out-of-pocket money, a total of about $1,500 that these kids will never get back. I've got three of them that will not be able to show next year because they can't get a sheep. I'll try to get them sponsors to buy them sheep, but that's, you know, it's all water under the bridge now. The fact is, you know, when a kid gets E. coli, a lot of them don't come out of it. There were kids laying in the straw, you know, playing in the straw, they, they had no idea. There were people back there with kids with strollers. These people had no idea what lurked under that straw. All the people that I talked to from NC State and all said that the biggest concern was that they were using straw. Straw holds moisture, it holds bacteria, and this was held there. My other biggest concern was that we were required to get health papers, and we paid $75 for these health papers. We had them out there in a book for them to look at, and we were just kinda, nah, didn't look at them. As a result, somebody's lamb there had sore mouth, and our lambs contracted sore mouth and that. And I had three lambs that were not able to go on to the state fair, they weren't able to go to any of the other fairs, and these kids lost their money. That's my concern. You know, would y'all like to pay the $1,500 that these kids are out of that? I think that Matt Behringer, I don't care what anybody says, shouldn't be over any kind of animals, and I'm, you know, I'm just shocked that he's in agriculture at all, because I've talked to all the people from North Carolina State University, and they all like, what? They did what? And I guarantee you, next year, they'll be watching how high that stuff stacked and what's stacked under it. I'd like to wish you Merry Christmas, and thank you.
Thank you. Emerald Layton.
Good evening. Thank you for letting us come and speak today. My name is Emerald Layton. I show sheep this year at the Cabarrus County Fair. I was very disappointed whenever I walked into the barn and seen the conditions that they expected our sheep to go into. My team and I spent a lot of time cleaning the pens that our sheep were to go into, and in result of that, we didn't have time to prepare ourselves or our sheep for the show. I was not comfortable with having my sheep in the area, even after we cleaned it, it had not been disinfected. And I wasn't comfortable with my own well-being in the area. In our agriculture classes, we are taught the importance of disinfecting the areas before another animal comes in, and just common basic safety procedures that need to take place before other animals are brought into something like that. I was shocked that they allowed us to come in there. I was shocked they allowed the animals to come in and the public. There was bystanders coming through the area that was marked off for livestock exhibitors and animals only. This was the first show that I was able to take my lamb to, and it was the last. My lamb costing me $350. It costed $300 to feed him throughout the show season. I spent $50 in healthcare on the lamb, and that total was up to be about $700. Because I was not able to take the lamb to the North Carolina State Fair, I still have the lamb. I wasn't able to sell him there. I'm still having to feed him and provide healthcare for him. If I take this lamb to auction, I may be able to get $100, maybe. That is still leaving me in the hole about $500. Thank you for letting us speak today.
Thank you. Brian Stansel.
Hi, I'm Brian Stansel. I'm the superintendent of the tractors for the Cabarrus County Fair. Uh, it was brought to my attention that in the report from, uh, Raleigh State Fair that come back to Cabarrus County Fair that I had 14 tractors, that was not so, I only had seven. Three of my guys did not receive their premium, their $10 for bringing tractors. One of them's Mr. Mark Travman, who was here. Mr. Joe Smith, who was here, he didn't receive his, and also David Balls, which is Marvin's son, he did not receive his premium. Um, I'm only limited to so much space for tractors. My request is, from the fair office, that if I'm gonna need more space to get more tractors in, I'm just limited to so much space. They want more tractors for the fair. I cannot receive any more tractors unless the fair manager puts me more space out at the fair for the tractors. Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Joe Smith.
I moved up here in Cabarrus County in 1963, and I've been attending a good many fairs, uh, Cabarrus County Fair even when it was over on Union Cemetery Road. And I've been attending the fair down in Stanley County, and, uh, excuse me. I've seen a lot of changes in Cabarrus County Fair in the last five to six years, which, and I live just across the road from where the new fire ground is now. And the crowd is getting slacker and slacker. But, uh, you want to see a good crowd, I think if we get a tractor pull or maybe horse pull in over there at the Cabarrus County Fair. I've seen it happen, it bring a lot of people in. People really go out for that. You go down to Big Lick, when Mr. Ted Henson puts on a show, if you don't get there within two hours or two hours and a half, before the show starts, it's hard to get a parking place. I mean, they, they pack in down there just to see a tractor pull. And I think that'd be a great step for the Cabarrus County Fair if they could put something in like that. And, uh, other than that, that's about all I have to complain about. Uh, I'd like to see it get opened up and get some excitement going over there, and maybe get the price down a little bit on the people that, uh, comes in and sets up to serve their food, to barbecue their turkey legs, they, I've talked to, give me any of them, they complain about the big price they have to pay, and, uh, if any of you is familiar about the guy coming down from Morganton that does the blacksmith work? Uh, he says if, if he can't get a little bit cheaper deal than what he's had in the last five or six years, he said he probably wouldn't show back up, so that'd be a great help to, uh, help some of the people like that if we could. Thank y'all much, God bless, have a Merry Christmas.
Thank you. Next I have Robert Simmons.
My name is Robert Simmons. I've actually been here twice before trying to get you involved in solving a problem at the Cabarrus County Department of Social Services. They are openly discriminating against people because of their race and sex. They're denying people help with medical care, they're denying people help with their food stamps, and they play games. Like, for example, the only time I ever get any help are the persons of the same race as me. If my case is assigned to a person of a different race than me, no matter what it is, food stamps or any kind of thing, I don't get any help for a long period of time. Or if they do anything, I don't get told about it, it just happens, I get no communication, they return no phone calls, and then I have to go in, and I have to file complaints and play the jerk. And I had to do this seven or eight times in the last two years, after I got hurt really, really badly. I've come to you guys, ask you to get involved. Now I'm asking, the, there were five people, including you, Mr. Mesmer, that was on the board of directors overseeing the Cabarrus County Department of Social Services. I now understand that it's changing over, that there's new people coming in. But you're still the people that are there. So I'm willing to give you the opportunity to show me that you really want to solve this problem. Ben Rose is the wrong person to run the Department of Social Services. He isn't running that place, he's letting his female staff members run this place. And they're afraid to do anything to solve this problem for the very simple reason that if they go to a black woman and they say, "You can't be yelling and screaming at people you don't like, you can't be denying them help," then they get called a racist, and that prevents them from getting promoted. We have to get past this problem. I'm gonna go one step further, to show you how badly that place is ran. I got involved in an organization through them called the Community Free Clinic, which is paid for by, I think it was, uh, Community Care Southern Piedmont. It turns out that Mrs. Tricia Baker, who's overseeing the food and stamp, uh, part of the DHHS, also is on the board of directors for this organization. At that time, I had a brain tumor. I did not realize I had a brain tumor, I only knew that I had really bad head pains, and that I couldn't get anyone to help me find out why. Several doctors at, uh, CMC Northeast knew I had a- Several doctors at CMC Northeast knew I had a brain tumor, but they did not tell me. They kept it a secret. And I went to the Community Free Clinic. Grace Liam, a nurse practitioner, also did not tell me. In my original papers going in there, they mentioned that I was complaining of serious head pains, but right afterwards, they kept it out. They no longer talked about head pains. I then found out that $5 million is coming from the state of North Carolina going to this program of Southern Piedmont, and they use that money allegedly to provide medical treatment for people in Cabarrus County. Well, it turns out that there's a possibility that Gerald Mack, who is the operations manager for that, was involved in a scam with CMC Northeast in which they were funneling all $5 million directly and strictly to the hospital. It seems that when I started mentioning to them that I was going to go to another organization, another medical provider to have my head looked at, an organization that would have been paid for by CCP, they threw me off the program. I kept trying to ask them why they threw me off, and they gave me varying reasons. They said I did not follow a plan of order, but after many letters, they would never tell me what that plan of order was that I didn't follow. I went to Fletcher Hardsell, a Republican senator, to ask him to help me solve this problem, and he said, "I can't because I'm on the board of directors for Community Free Clinic." I went to Tricia Baker, and I asked her, I says, "About the problem?" She couldn't help me. She was on the board of directors for CCP. And I kept asking CCP, "Why didn't you tell me I had a brain tumor?" And they would never answer that question. But yet, Mrs. Baker, who oversees the food stamp part of DHHS, is on that board of directors. She couldn't have found out that answer why they not only would not tell me I had a brain tumor, but would not pay for my treatment, and would instead throw me off the minute they found out that I'm going to somebody who's going to suck money away from CMC Northeast. Now, just to give you guys an example of how mad I am, I'm going to sue you for $2 million unless somebody shows me that they're serious. I'll give you one week. Then I'll go down, I'll file the papers. I don't need a lawyer. I'm a smart enough man to take you into court. I'm asking you to help me solve the problem. I've come here as a nice guy a couple of times, trying to get this problem solved. Now I'm gonna be a jerk. One week, I wanted to see somebody sit down with me. Now, I've had a conversation over the phone with the county attorney, Mr. Cook, about the situation. One last thing, I know I'm over my time, but this is to show you how bad it is at DHHS. I went in there and was politely asking a lady a question about the name of another person. I have chemical poise, and I cannot read the name tags. I had a bunch of illegal aliens gang upon me in the workplace and harm me very seriously because I speak Spanish. They don't like Spanish-speaking Americans that aren't Hispanic working with them. And I went in there, and I was asking her nicely what the name of this lady was down there who had, I've watched discriminate against 30 white people over the years, and she didn't know. So I said, "That's fine, don't worry about it." And a woman next to me began to attack me, verbally attacked me, a woman I never met before in my life, I'd never seen before. And I ignored her as I was leaving. I looked at her, and she began to verbally attack me again. So I came back later, and I had a conversation with a supervisor. And then a couple of weeks later, I got a letter telling me how I was standing up in front of all these people, making racial slurs and saying how much I hated black people. I'd never said any of those things. But that's what comes out of DHHS when it is corrupt and incompetent and badly managed. I'm not the only white man who's ever had this problem. There are hundreds of white people who have had this problem. I'm the only one with the courage and the tenacity to come up to you and let you understand that I've had enough. It's gonna stop. With your help or without your help, I'm gonna do something to either embarrass this county so badly that they replace Ben Rose and Tricia Baker, or we're gonna get involved together and solve the problem. You can't let people harm other people. Their attitude is they can do anything they want to me, and no one will do anything about it. For the last time, help me solve this problem, or I will bring it into the court and into the newspapers and into television. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, those are all the cards that I have tonight for informal public comment. Next, we have O Business and NC Fast Update.
Good evening again. Before, I'll let Trish and Diane give you a little bit of update on some of the data and some other policy information. I wanted to share with you just a couple of things that we're looking at and been dealing with. We are consistently evaluating strategies on how to continue to address the backlog issues that we have, and one strategy has been that we have, as you know, been working some Saturday overtime, pretty much November and December from a mandatory standpoint. And we've had some struggles with Saturday overtime in December. The first Saturday, December 7th, I believe it was, the NC Fast system was down, pretty much. It was unavailable to us unexpectedly, but we had a few come in and do a little preparation work, and that was about all we could do. This past Saturday, we had a lot of staff there, but we had some local IT issues. There had been a virus, I think, that had gotten into the server, and IT was deployed very early in the morning, worked really hard, got the problem solved, but by the time we got it solved, we had lost a lot of our time. And we've now learned, as of today, that NC Fast will be down this week. So Saturday overtime strategy in December has not been as what we would like it to be. In addition to that, we felt like we've really been, our employees have been really working hard, supervisors have been working hard, management has been working really hard, putting in long hours. We had already made a decision before this weekend's information to basically take December 28th, that Saturday, off to give our employees a little bit of a break. They need that morale boost, and we want to make sure they have time with their families, and we can give them that break to come back in the new year re-energized. We've been, in addition to that, looking at Medicaid rollout as we're getting ready to enter into that, and there's been a lot of communication over the last three or four weeks with the Directors Association, the Social Service Directors Association in the state regarding improving communications, improving training with the state. There's been just a lot of frustrations being expressed. That has, I think, facilitated the letter that you believe, I believe you have in your packet that was dated, I think, December 5th from Sherry Bradshaw. That letter started to lay out, again, some of the issues that we've been talking about as well, too, with those communications. And there's been a couple of conference calls and a couple of meetings from there, and I think Mr. Downs has been really working hard to advocate from the county management side as well, too, to help us with these issues, because we're facing, you know, the Medicaid rollout as well. So those are a couple of the strategies that we've been looking at. We, of course, are going to reevaluate. When we get into January, again, how do we continue to attack the backlog to get it in better shape? Right now, our focus is to just try to get any and all remaining October recertifications out of the way. There's a few of them still. Get those done. Try to keep our head above water through the holiday season, and then, you know, come back in January and see what we need to do to try to get it resolved. But with that, I think Trish and Diane are gonna give you a quick update on the numbers and a couple of the policy issues that are in the letter that you have as well.
As you can see, we have made progress since last month, and we're very, very proud of our staff who have, as Ben said, dedicated their Saturdays and late hours to the progress. We have about 655 applications outstanding, and this was as of Friday before last, and we had 942 reviews that were outstanding. And we did not get an update this week because we were trying to just get the work done, but they have made some additional progress. So we are very pleased with that. As Ben said, we expect the next two weeks to be more status quo because of the holidays and just because we are allowing staff some time off with families. And today, we had a meeting just to assess, because initially, we had denied a lot of leave, but we had a meeting to assess that, because we're really concerned about morale, and we want staff to have a break. So we, I think Mr. Morris talked about that last time, about, you know, staff morale, and we really, we're, you know, we need our staff, but if they're burned out or leave us, obviously, that does us no good. So we're really concerned about their mental and physical health. So we just said, you know, we're canceling the 28th, and now we're canceling, I think, the 21st just because of unplanned downtime with NC Fast. But our big thing that we wanted to share with y'all was this letter from the state, because some of the things in it lead us to concern that Medicaid will be issue or problematic, just like food and nutrition was. One of the things that I'd like to point out on page one, they talk about the 10,000 pending applications in the system, and this is statewide, but Cabarrus has their share of those. And at the point they become released to us, they will all be due the same day. And so what that will do is add to the volume that staff already has to deal with Medicaid. And we currently get about 1,000 apps or applications a month in Medicaid, and then you add all these that are due on top of that, and these are the ones they know about. Unfortunately, I don't know that the state or the federal government really know what's out there. So we're trying to prepare, but it's hard to prepare when you don't know what you're facing. So that is one thing. The other thing, they are talking on page one about the MAGI rules, which is the new way Medicaid is going to be, the new way eligibility in Medicaid is going to be determined, and MAGI stands for Modified Adjusted Gross Income, and so they're following more of a tax program policy for Medicaid. But the rules are effective January 1st, but they are not in NC Fast. So we have cases that we have been taking since October that the staff can't do anything with because the rules aren't there. So again, those will all have to be loaded, and then once they're loaded, they're already overdue because you have 45 days to process. So the state is giving some waivers and has obtained some waivers, but there still is a group of citizens who are expecting their benefits and will not have them because the rules aren't out there. So we are concerned about that. A positive note, which we think is positive, the state is trying to work on additional reimbursement so that the counties could get 75% reimbursement for Medicaid activities, where currently, they're getting 50%. So that is, of course, it is, again, tax dollars, but it is a benefit to the staff, and perhaps the temps that we're using will be able to get those reimbursed at a higher rate. And we do have temps in our budget because we learned from food and nutrition that temps are essential to the process, and we had planned for those back in, you know, last January when we did our budget. But we have not rolled those out yet because of the delays in NC Fast. And obviously, until we know when our due date is for hard launch, which is the day we go fully into NC Fast, we can't really, you know, put a date on when we're bringing temps in, but we're already developing job duties and, you know, locations and ensuring that IT equipment is there, and anything we can take advantage of, we're doing, and we're trying to plan as far ahead as we can. So we're looking at those things, and for Medicaid, we take about 1,000 applications per month, as I mentioned, and this is before the publicity and the things that they're doing with the federal marketplace. We also have about 2,000 recertifications per month in Medicaid, and that's in addition to, you know, what we do in food and nutrition. So staff has a lot of work. We are making, trying to make sure that we're doing all the things that the state recommended. If we have vacancies, we're trying to get those filled, and Mike and Pam and Jonathan and Lundie have been very, very beneficial to us in recommending, making recommendations and streamlining our processes so that we can get our vacancies filled that much faster. We're completing our universal training, which is the training where staff does all programs to get ready for the NC Fast rollout, and we've worked with IT to ensure that if there are any infrastructure issues, which the state recommended, we look at that those are addressed, and I believe most of those have been addressed or are being addressed. So if there's any issues, they are working on those. Those were really the things we wanted to point out to you, and if you have any questions, we'd be glad to entertain those.
Commissioners, any questions?
I just wanted to add a couple of comments. You know, we have spent a tremendous amount of time discussing this matter over many months, and I'm sure that there are a lot of people out there wondering, you know, why can't you guys get this straightened out? And I mean, you guys, us guys, and you guys. And so I wanted to, the more we talk about it, the more experiences that I have, the more I learn about it, and I wanted to share an experience that I had over the past several weeks with folks here. I received a call from one of our local mayors. A young lady had called him indicating that she was experiencing difficulties getting her assistance that she needed. She was pregnant, she had small children, et cetera. He called me and said, "Would you mind," you know, he, of course, realized that was not in the city's jurisdiction, and said, "Would you mind calling this young lady and talking to her?" I said, "Sure, I'd be glad to." So I called her, talked to her, got the information, got her phone number. I said, "Let me talk with the folks at DSS and see if they can help, and either they will call you back or I will." And so I sent that information along to you guys. I got a very prompt response back. This is what we see, and we're checking into it, and as soon as we know something, we'll let you know. Before I had an opportunity to call her back, she called me again, said, "You haven't called me back." I said, "Well, I haven't gotten any information yet." I said, "But just as soon as we get something, I will call you or they will call you." Then she called me again, and she said, "Nobody will return my phone calls. Nobody there will return my phone calls. You won't return my phone calls." I said, "Well, ma'am, I'm gonna return your phone calls as soon as I get some information." Went back and forth. Finally, her mother called me from another county, and we talked about it for a while. So I'm not sure the total number of phone calls, but at that point, you know, I got, and of course, I communicated with you folks during that time. Well, I did it again, and I said, you know, I said, "Her biggest complaint is that nobody will talk to her, nobody will return her phone calls." And that's uncharacteristic of the other things that I've been experiencing. You folks are very good about returning phone calls and doing what you say. Then the comment came back to me from somebody at DSS. "Well, we've had difficulty getting in touch with this lady. We're looking at her file right now, and we've got a couple of different phone numbers." And I said, "Well, this is the phone number I gave this morning, got this morning." Well, that was even different from the others that were on the application. And so I began to look back through my notes, and sure enough, each time I talked to this lady, she'd give me a different phone number. And so, you know, it helped me to understand how much, I mean, I know how much time that I invested in that one case, and you have thousands to do. So, you know, I just wanted to make sure that you know, and that the people listening today know, that it's not a simple matter. As a result of that, I did a little reading, and I hope that y'all will bear with me while I read just a little bit of what I found. And this is a WRAL News Review of thousands of pages of emails and other public records shows that for more than a month, starting July 15th, counties across the state struggle with a buggy sluggish system that frequently froze up and prevented workers from keying in cases. By the time the NC Fast team identified the problem as a simple browser compatibility issue in late August, almost 70,000 food stamp customers statewide, many of them with families with children, were waiting on overdue benefits, according to statistics from the U.S. Department of Agriculture. July 15th was a date all of us will remember well. The North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, for months, attributed these problems to the system's learning curve and the failure of some counties to properly prepare for the transition. The counties that were prepared, the counties that the county commissioners had authorized more staff for the departments, where the departments were on top of their training, where the staff were working with us, those counties had relatively little problems, DHHS Secretary Aldona Wass told WRAL News in November. So it's not the computer glitches, but the department's own internal assessment report shows only a small minority of counties face problems with training, staffing, and technical infrastructure. And as DHHS officials downplayed the widespread technical problems across the state, prompting frustration from social services directors, counties built up a backlog so massive that state workers were forced to tackle tens of thousands of cases themselves. Yeah, and to me, that demonstrates that we've heard different stories from different places, and we're not in this alone, and this goes on to talk about some specific counties and some of the situations that they've dealt with. So, you know, I'm saying thank you for doing- So, you know, I'm saying thank you for doing as well as you've done with it. Hopefully, you know, it's not sounding real encouraging to me that it's going to get a lot better anytime soon. So, you know, I just want to say from my standpoint and what I have read, and I could go on for an hour reading some of these reports, you know, I sympathize with you. And it seems like the state of North Carolina has put us in a terrible position. It goes on to talk about the various departments of social services across the state that have helped organize food banks and other ways to try to take care of clients while they're getting this straightened out. So it's a very serious problem. And thank you for what you're trying to do to solve that problem.
Thank you.
Any other comments?
The only thing I want to ask about was you mentioned the temps and when you were going to bring them on, that has to do with the next rollout, I guess. How much training lead time do you, I mean, how are you going to plan in their training lead time and make sure that when it hits, you've got the temps in there to get the work done?
The state will give us probably at least two months' notice. Well, right now, we're planning for a March rollout. So as we get a little closer to that, and we're hoping there's a conference call this Thursday, that we'll actually get some hard and fast dates. But we'll be looking at towards the end of January to start. We've already got the recruitment in place with core staff as our primary go-to temp agency. But we've also been in contact or received contact from a company in Mecklenburg in Charlotte that has got experience with Mecklenburg County themselves doing this very thing. So we will be tapping them as well, we think. And the training we will put them through is the same training that our original temps had, not this last batch that we got, but the actually keying into NCFAST to convert cases. So we will do that. And they will also go through the state training that the state, right now, we've asked to be a location for county training. And they would do a whole month of training, and it will probably start, based on if we had a March rollout, it would start sometime mid-February and go for a month until mid-March. But we've reserved our room. We're planning that they're going to be in our location. So we would send the temps through that. So we would have them onboard at least a couple of weeks before the state training so they could get used to our county system. And then they would go through the state training and be ready. As soon as we hard launch, they would be ready. So that is our current plan, unless we hear something else from the state.
Okay, thank you very much. Any other questions? Okay, thank you. Commissioners, the next thing we have is the consent agenda. 12 items on there. At this time, I'd accept a motion to approve the consent agenda.
We'll move in a second.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, next we have new business. The first thing we have is Kelly Sifford from Planning and Development, the CDBG 2012 Scattered Site Housing Rehab Grant closeout, and we will need a public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We expended a total of $255,290, completed five urgent repairs and four full rehabs. Eight of the households were elderly, one disabled. Five were less than 30% of the median income, and four were 30% to 50% of the median income. Again, this is a closeout for the program. So all we would need to do tonight is hold a public hearing. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, any questions before we do the public hearing? Okay, at this time, I would open a public hearing, sorry about that, for the closeout of the 2012 CDBG Scattered Site Housing Rehab Grant. Is there anyone to speak for or against this issue? Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. Commissioners, at this time, if there are no comments from the commissioners, we do need a motion to authorize me to sign the closeout report. Do I have such a motion?
We'll move.
I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion, a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. Okay, next we have Salisbury Rowan Community Action Agency. And this is a presentation of the fiscal year 2014-15 Application for Funding. It is a requirement of your agency that you come and present your application to us. And that's what we are approving tonight, is that we have, we will do a motion that acknowledges that we have got, we are in receipt of your application. Welcome, thank you.
Thank you. Get it to working. Okay. I will be presenting on the Community Action, Salisbury Rowan Community Actions Agencies Community Service Block Grant Program. I would like to first give you a highlight of what community action agencies are. Community action agencies are nonprofit, private, and public organizations established under the Economic Opportunity Act of 1964 to fight the war, America's War on Poverty. Community action agencies help people to help themselves in achieving self-sufficiency. Today, there are approximately 1,100 community action agencies in the United States. Salisbury Rowan Community Action Agency being one of them has been operating and serving families for over 40 years. Salisbury Rowan Community Action Agency provides services for individuals, children, families.
I don't want to interrupt you. Can you pull that microphone over? There you go. We'll make sure we get you on the phone cam. Thank you.
As I said, we provide services for individuals, children, and families to enhance their quality of life and to promote opportunities for self-sufficiency. And our agency vision is that everyone will have an opportunity for success in life. The Community Service Block Grant provides anti-poverty funding for income-eligible individuals. And our long-term goal is that we provide support and comprehensive services to individuals and families to develop skills and increase income so that 45 may rise above the poverty level between July 1, 2013, and June 30 of 2016. Our current annual budget is $383,899, I mean, $809, I'm sorry. Cabarrus County currently receives $156,923, which is 41% of the budget. Our participant services are $54,480. The services that we provide through the Community Service Block Grant are outreach services, securing standardized housing. We also provide education, childcare, transportation, employment, healthcare, food, clothing, and furniture assistance. Our community impact for 2013 in Cabarrus County was that 11 of our participants rose above the poverty guidelines. 12 obtained employment, 8 obtained better employment, meaning that they rose above the income guidelines or received a job paying more than minimum wage. 4 obtained a job with medical benefits. 4 obtained education and training services. 7 secured standardized housing. And 10 received emergency assistance. Our projected outcome was that 110 persons would be serviced this year. We actually serviced 113. I want to give a highlight on some of our participants. We have Nazevong Gomembe. She is a United States veteran and recent graduate of ECPI University. She earned an associate's degree in network security. Kendall Fry obtained her formity technician's certificate through Rowan Cabarrus Community College. And following an extended period of homelessness, Cabarrus County residents James and Amy Tewell received assistance from Salisbury Rowan Community Action Agency to obtain housing for their family. Some of our additional accomplishments in education were, well, 7 of our participants received CNA certificates, call center certificates, conversational Spanish certificates through Rowan Cabarrus Community College. 2 of our participants received associate's degrees in business administration through Rowan Cabarrus Community College. And then we had one of our participants to receive a bachelor's in sports management through Lemonstone College. Family development specialists assist participants with gaining employment and entrepreneurship skills. Many have obtained jobs with various employers. Some of the jobs or employers that have hired our participants are American Red Cross, Vocational Rehabilitation, Stanley Tools, The Men's Warehouse, Home Instead, Daymart Recovery, Food Line Corporate Office, American Health Connections, and YMCA of Greater Charlotte. Now, through support and guidance, Ms. Candace Miller was taught entrepreneurship skills, and this led her to own her own business. She is now the proud owner of Southern Charm Commercial and Residential Cleaning. We also provide self-help workshops through the Community Service Block Grant. Some of them are conducting employment searches, parenting skills, maintaining good health and nutrition, budget and financial literacy, home ownership and credit building, entrepreneurship, and career and job readiness. We had some of our participants to partake in one of our monthly workshops, which was preparing low-cost healthy meals. So Mr. Carl Carr helped our facilitator, Ms. Pam Ooten, with the North Carolina Cooperative Extension to fix a meal and show them how to fix one without having to spend a lot. Some of our partners are the City of Kannapolis, North Carolina Cooperative Extension, Concord Housing Authority, Division of Employment Services, Goodwill Industries, Rowan Cabarrus Community College, Wood Forest Bank Cabarrus Health Alliance, and Project Save the Cabarrus County. Our family services program, which is the Community Service Block Grant, is funded through the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services, Department of Economic Opportunity. And our Cabarrus office is located at 1413 Sedan Avenue in Kannapolis. Are there any questions?
Commissioners, any questions at this time?
I do have a question. We're just looking at this application. I suppose that because we are submitted and we have to at least accept it, that there is some role for us in this. And I did look through it because it was important to look through these. I have one question, well, I have a few questions for you. But on your page 20, there's a statement that says, "Area shelters are overcrowded, and the homeless rate has increased with a continuous migration from other service areas, causing shelters to reach capacity." And I'm curious if you have any idea what's causing that migration of homeless people to this area?
Well, for one, Cabarrus County only has one homeless shelter that we've seen that has been registered. So therefore, we don't have any place other than Cooperative Christian Ministries to refer our participants to. And then they may end up referring our participants to, I think it's Salvation Army. But other than that, there's no other place for us to send them.
My question was specifically about the migration, though. I mean, do you have any idea what would cause a migration of homeless people to this area?
Well, I'm not really sure. I'm not really sure, mainly because there's so many. I mean, even with the Charlotte area, Rowan County, they're trying to build new shelters. But other than that, I mean, I guess it's just that everyone's trying to find somewhere for the homeless to go.
I had a few questions for you on your finances as well. You mentioned that your total budget was $383,809. Is that right?
Yes.
On page 307, I believe, of our agenda, it shows total client services at $43,550. And that is a specific designation of each of the things that you mentioned. Is that right, that 10% of the funds from this go to client services?
Yes. And actually, that amount that you received was a misprint. I think what they did was they had to amend it. I'm not quite sure. But yes, 10% goes into client services. And that percentage is determined through our funders, who require us to make sure that we give more comprehensive services. So while 10% of the funding goes directly to the direct services, such as helping them find housing, food and clothing services, and home, you know, things like that, our other funding goes into training and making sure that they have the type of training and education needed to help them rise above income-poverty guidelines.
Well, what concerns me is that we have, it looks like, 8 employees working there. And you mentioned that we have 113 persons served. So if you take 113 and divide it by 8, that's 14 persons served by each employee for an entire year. That means you can dedicate one whole month for each person served for each employee. I mean, your whole month. That's a lot of time.
Well, actually, our caseloads are a lot higher than that. We actually have about 22 persons per family development specialist. And the way it works, when we have participants on our current caseload, once they graduate the program, we continue to roll in new participants. And that's how we get our numbers. We continue to roll them in so that we can make sure that everyone gets funding. It's not just those persons that stay on, people can stay into our program up to 3 years. It's not, oh, you stay in here 1 year and then you're out. They can be in our program up to 3 years. However, most of our participants do not. What happens is if they rise above our income-poverty guidelines, we will keep them in the program up to 90 more days to make sure that their income and employment is stable. And then upon that, we will discharge them from the program, and then we'll have new applicants to come in. So our funding is dependent upon the numbers served. So most of the time, 9 times out of 10, we serve more than what our projected outcome, what we thought we would have served in the first place.
Right. In this year, you projected to serve 110, and you served 113. So I was using that 113 number and still came up with 14 per 8 employees, which is, I don't know that there's a lot of efficiency in that. Out of the budget, $383,270, looks like, goes to salaries and wages and benefits. So I am a little bit concerned that we take these large amounts of money and it really ends up just being unemployment and center for people and only 10% of the...
Well, actually, it's not. That money also goes into employee trainings. In order for us to teach our participants how to maintain income, how to become entrepreneurs, we have to go into training ourselves. And that money also does that as well. And it's just, it's more to it than what the budget says.
Well, that's what I'm curious about because based on what the budget says, I mean, like I said, we don't vote on this. But I do think if it comes before me, if they, somebody wants us to at least look at this, which is why they require that you bring it to us and at least have us accept it. And I looked through it, and I see some things in this finances that make me question whether there's a lot of efficiencies in this program. With only $43,000 going to client services out of 383, I have questions about whether there are efficiencies in this.
And I understand. But like I said, that's, the amounts that we have in our budget is determined by our funders, so.
Well, thank you for answering my question. I sure appreciate it.
Okay, are there any other questions?
This is the third year I've seen this program. I don't see very little, I see very little change in it. Last year, I think it helped about 10% went to help people. And like I said last year, with programs like this, the poor's going to stay poor.
Well, I beg to differ, sir. Because what we do is teach our, teach our participants to maintain their income. We, if, I think that anyone could just give assistance. But if you teach a person how to gain employment, how to maintain that employment, if you teach a person the necessary job skills and the soft skills that are required to maintain that employment, you give them an opportunity to the education, then they'll be a more productive citizen and be able to contribute to the economy, so.
They might be, but when you use 90% of the funds to pay somebody that don't get much help to the people that need it.
Commissioners, the requested action before us is that we need to acknowledge the receipt of the SRCAA's Fiscal Year 2014-15 Community Services Block Grant Application. So at this time, I would accept a motion to acknowledge the receipt of this application. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? Second. All those in favor of acknowledging... All those in favor of acknowledging the receipt of this application, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Marshall's going to come up and talk about foundation repair on the Mount Pleasant Emergency Communications Tower.
Thank you for adding this item to the agenda. This is one that does not fit our normal agenda sequence in terms of calendar. As you're aware, Cabarrus County has two external communication towers, one Midland and one in Mount Pleasant. And the one in Mount Pleasant, we also have some private carriers that are on that tower with us. As private carriers add or change out equipment, we require studies to be done to make sure that the tower is structurally capable of handling that, and then they're required to fund those repairs. In fact, they're required to fund the study to make sure that it can handle their equipment. We had found that there needed to be some foundation additions with some change out of equipment. The private companies began to make that change out, and we discovered that when this tower was initially constructed in 1997, there were some deficiencies that needed to be corrected. So part of that cost comes back to the county. This action before you is both to, a motion to approve an expansion of the existing contract with the private consulting firm we use to oversee that work, as well as a motion to adopt an attached budget amendment. The budget amendment simply recognizes that with those private carriers, we have lease payments coming in, and it recognize, that is adjusting a construction or renovation fund that we use to maintain these towers, as well as our larger radio system, and recognize the amount of rent that we'll receive for this fiscal year from those private carriers. And it does cover the repairs that need to be made and then some. So we are, we initially had looked at doing this with the private carriers, undertaking all of this construction, as well as some adjustments that need to be made along with it, but we've decided to take that in-house and oversee all that construction ourselves. It is a team of our sheriff's office, general services, our planning office, as well as finance, that have been overseeing this, along with these private consultants. And these two actions will help us undertake those initial foundation repairs and then move forward with the equipment change out for the private carriers.
Hey, Commissioners, any questions concerning this item? We didn't talk about this at our work session because we didn't have it then.
Are the funds for the construction, you said that those come out of a, is it a segregated fund that you have for construction funds for these type projects?
It is. There's a segregated fund for our radio equipment, the larger regional radio equipment, the actual radios themselves, as well as the maintenance and operation of these towers. So the funds come out of that. But in this particular repair, the private carriers are funding some portion, or about half of that, and the county will be funding half of that. And our rental income for one year alone exceeds the amount that we'll be putting into the repair.
What would we usually do with the rent money that comes in from these contracts?
It would go into that same account, and then we use it for that larger regional radio system. Mr. Downs is more familiar with that, but that is an area with the changing technology that we are, do make change outs on radios, and we still have funds available to make those necessary change outs and continue our participation in the regional radio plan.
So basically, the rent funds this construction account that we're going to take the money from. Is that right?
It does, and the fund also has monies in it that came from grant funds that helps fund the larger radio equipment. So it's, it's a mix of incomes, but the rent in particular would fund these repairs and upkeep of the tower.
Thank you. I didn't mean to ask you so many questions. We didn't get to chat about this at the work session.
It is a very complicated issue, and I would be glad to answer any questions you have.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Hey, any other questions? Hey, we have two motions. The first one would be to approve an expansion of the existing contract with professional resources and services. Do I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Okay, I have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, the next one, I need a motion to approve the attached budget amendment, which has been updated to the Construction and Renovation Fund.
So moved.
I have a motion and a second. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Okay, Commissioners, now we're to appointments to boards and committees. The first one that we have is the Fireman's Relief Fund trustees. We need a motion to appoint for each of the, sorry, let me say, the trustees, reappointed service Fireman's Relief Fund trustees for two-year terms, ending January 31st, 2016, from Allen Volunteer Fire Department Jimmy Morgan, Coldwater John Walker, Flo Store Tommy Louder, Harrisburg Lee Connor, Midland Joe Udi, Mount Pleasant Dale Udi, Mount Mitchell Bobby Knite, Odell Jacob Williams, Rhimer Erleene Cox, to serve as Fireman's Relief Fund trustees for a two-year term ending January 31st, 2016. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Hey, next, we need a motion to appoint for Georgeville Nicole Beaver from Northeast, Richard E. Earnhardt, to serve as Fireman's Relief Fund trustees for a two-year term ending January 31st, 2016. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Next, a motion to appoint Darrell Page from Midland and James Sales, Mount Pleasant Rural, to serve as Fireman's Relief Fund trustees to complete unexpired terms, ending January 31st, 2015. Do I have a motion to approve, to appoint?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. And, I'm sorry. Okay, next, for the Act of Living in Parks Commission. Let's see, at the November 21st, 2013 meeting, the commission voted unanimously to recommend the reappointment of John DeVito for the Eastern Area and Gina Lowry Concord Area for three-year terms, ending January 31st, 2017. Do I have a motion to reappoint?
So moved. Second.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Next, we have Human Services Advisory Board. We, this is a five-member board, which we agree that three members would be appointed to three-year terms and two members appointed to two-year terms. If you will look, let me find the page. Our page number 400. For simplification, do you have a recommendation?
Sure.
Okay.
I move to appoint Betty Bab, Anna Kane, Kay Scott.
To three-year terms?
Sure.
Okay.
And then, move to appoint Mary Stewart and Eric Williamson to two-year terms.
Okay.
Which I guess that could all be one motion.
We just need to designate two years and three years.
Right.
Okay, so we have a motion. Does anybody want to make any other recommendations?
My second question is a motion.
Okay, do you have a comment?
Waiting for discussion.
Okay. Well, we have a motion and a second. Do you want to have a discussion?
On Ms. Bab and Ms. Stewart, they're serving on other boards or other committees, so you will need to waive your policy to allow them to serve on two, two boards, two committees, if the motion moves forward.
Okay, that was part of your motion?
Yeah. I'll be happy to include that in my original motion.
Okay. Okay, are there any other, we have a motion and a second. Any other discussion? All those in favor, say aye. Aye. All those opposed? Okay. Okay, next, we've got Juvenile Crime Prevention Council. Let's see. Oh, it's always nice when we have a high school student that wants to get involved. Rodney Harrison II is a student at Cox Mill High School, and he would like to be appointed, and the JCPC met and voted to nominate him to fill the Cabarrus County Schools position on the council. So at this time, I'd accept a motion to appoint Rodney Harrison II to the JCPC as the Cabarrus County Schools representative, to complete an unexpired term, ending June 30th, 2014.
Chairman Poole, I will make such a motion, and I also wanted to say that I got the pleasure of meeting Mr. Harrison at the Eighth District Republican Gala on Saturday night and got to spend some time with him. And he was a wonderful young man, and we are blessed to have him serve in this capacity, so I will gladly make that motion.
I have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, next, we have the Cabarrus County Senior Centers Advisory Council. We have a number of motions in here. The Advisory Council voted unanimously, and this was presented to us, to, first motion to appoint Sharon Hatley, Pat Martin, Ernest Morrissey, and Mary Watts to the Cabarrus County Senior Center Advisory Council for three-year terms, ending December 31st, 2016. Do I have a motion to appoint?
So moved.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, there's a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, next, we have a motion to reappoint Annette Young for a three-year term, ending December 31st, 2016. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And next, we need a motion to remove Kay Scott, Anita Helms, Virginia Boots Walker, and Jean Chandler from the Cabarrus County Senior Centers Advisory Council roster and thank them for their many years of service.
So moved.
Do I have a motion? Do I have a second? I'll second your motion. Thank you. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay. Okay, Food Policy Council. They have a number of members that have expiring terms and are not seeking reappointments, and some that wish to be reappointed, and I think some new applicants. So the first one I have is a motion to appoint Dawn Simone for the at-large position, Jim Dudley Hunger Relief, Renee Shuford at-large position, and James Douglas Crawford Food Production position to the Food Policy Council for three-year terms, ending December 31st, 2016. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? Okay, next, we have a motion to reappoint Aaron Bayer to the Medical Industry position, Chris Jones Food Distribution, Penelope Perkins Bazee to the Education position, Lisa Wassendorf to the Food Distribution position, to the Food Policy Council for three-year terms, ending December 31st, 2016. Do I have a motion to reappoint?
So moved.
Have a motion? Do I have a second?
Second.
Motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And for those members whose terms were expiring, we need a motion to remove Gina Guthrie, Ed Hosack, David Bettendorf, David Kottaja, Dana Ritchie, Greg Kesterson, and Chad Von Cannon from the Food Policy Council roster and thank them for their service. Do we have a motion?
So moved.
Have a motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? And by the way, Gina Guthrie was told she might get off the board, but she's still cooking, so. We have been the beneficiary of her fine food before this, at our meetings. Okay, we have, you have a number of reports in your packet, Commissioners. At this time, I would ask, are there any updates from commission members who serve as liaisons to municipalities or on various boards and committees? Well, I have one. As they say, I was given my marching orders. I serve, as you know, on the Centralina Workforce Development Board, and there is a program called Incumbent Workforce Development Program. And the website says, "Are you looking for an effective and efficient way to upgrade the skills of your workers to stay competitive in this global economy? The Centralina Workforce Development Board offers funding for incumbent worker training to provide local businesses with the money needed to provide training for their current workforce. Since 2003, Centralina Workforce Development Board has awarded 81 grants to local businesses with skills training, provided over 4,200 employees. A total of a little over $2 million in incumbent worker funding has been approved, thus providing real economic investment in existing businesses and the workforce for our region. Incumbent worker training grants are competitive with final approval for funding from the North Carolina Department of Commerce." They have done the first round of applications. If any business owners in Cabarrus County are interested, if you will go to their website, which is www.centrilinaworks, with an S on the end, dot com, the contact people would be David Hollers or Vale Carter, and they can answer questions. At their website, you can find guidelines, which will explain to you who is eligible. There's a limit of funding. We have, the reason that I was asked to present this tonight or mention this is that Cabarrus County, in all honesty, in this region, has not been very active with our businesses asking for funding. We did have a grant in 2011, which was the last one, Grous Industries, Hendrick Motorsports in 2010, Deals Auto Glass Service in 2009. Then we go all the way back to 2006. There were a few years we didn't have any applicants for Cabarrus County. So some of the things, I know one example that I heard was, if you need to train your workforce in some new equipment, maybe you've got some, you're expanding your business and you need to do some training in running a forklift. Not something that I would know how to do, so maybe you need help in doing that, and they can help arrange to bring in competent individuals and do training on-site, soft skills. I hear that over and over again. They have soft skills training. It is a competitive process. They're getting ready to go for round two, and I would like to highly encourage anyone, any businesses that are currently in Cabarrus County and operating and profitable, that's one of the requirements, you have to be a profitable business, to please apply, go to the website, get their information, and get in touch with them, and see if this program would be beneficial to your business. Okay? At this time, I would ask, are there any general comments that are not related to your positions? Yes, sir?
I had one, two general comments. First is, I want to say thank you to all the employees that we honored tonight. We had, I think, 158 employees that we honored tonight, and we had nine, I believe, that have served us for 25 years in this county, and we appreciate all that you do for us. We, as Commissioner Poole said, we work part-time and try to make the best decisions for the county, and you work full-time and you're out there every day, and we appreciate that. And my second comment is just, I want to say Merry Christmas to everybody. It's a wonderful time of year to celebrate the birth of our Lord Jesus Christ, and just like to say Merry Christmas.
I'd just like to say Merry Christmas to everybody. Remember what the season's about, Jesus. Other than that, we don't have no hope.
Okay, any other general comments? Okay. We do have need for closed session tonight, Commissioners, and we need to invite Pam Dubois to come into closed session with us. So at this time, I would accept a motion to go into closed session, as authorized by North Carolina General Statute 143, 318, 11A3, and to invite Ms. Dubois to join us. Do I have a motion?
So moved. Second.
A motion and a second. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Do you have anything else? Okay, thank you all very much. Next time we see you, it will be 2014. Have a wonderful holiday and good night.